Does anybody have any questions on it?
So the recycling is waste disposal, right? The same budget as the trash, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is there enough in there to have a yard waste bin between the months of April and October consistently?
You have yard waste anytime you want to go down there.
So you can re-access that anytime?
Yeah, if you want to go down when it's open, you go down there and they have the bin and you throw this stuff in.
When it's open every other Saturday?
Yeah.
I'll be talking about consistently.
Nice, every day.
People pour trash in them.
Is there enough money in the budget to provide that service?
Yes.
Who's gonna monitor it?
Who's monitoring the ones down here?
Did you look at the ones down there today?
They're terrible.
I mean, you can only get a little something in there like that.
So the Sunshine has no, is it still Sunshine or is it a...
Yeah, it's not Sunshine.
They don't have bins that can be used for the yard waste? They don't have anything that can be provided for that?
They probably have roll-off boxes like what's down there. I don't know if they have, like, they might even have some that have lids or something on them like that would look like a, like those dumpsters. They just have lids that you can open and throw in. I'm not sure. I know they do have roll-off boxes. That's a, that's a question that can surely be asked.
Yeah, the first thing you know, people throw the garbage in it.
No, no, we're discussing...
How does Kendrick ban theirs? What is, they have theirs out all the time, don't they?
Yes, they do. We're not allowed to use it.
Right, I know we're not, but how, do they have any issues?
It's just right there by their city hall, doesn't it?
But I think they have a camera, so, like, I don't know.
They have issues with it too. I mean, I talked to the lady there and...
Okay, but we're discussing the feasibility of it, we, I get it. And by the way, I appreciate that this length Nick has gone to assure we haven't for those months of April. He's done a great job. I just don't think it's a big enough service. But what you've done is what we asked for at the time, and I don't think it's enough of a service. I think we need to provide a more regular, yes, sir?
Just speaking from experience, we ordered a 2-yard dumpster from Sunshine and we put our sludge in it. They did not have a way to dump it, and it had to be shoveled out manually, which caused us a lot extra.
What do you mean, they didn't have a way to dump it?
It didn't have a gate on it. It was a solid rectangle all the way around.
Oh, so they didn't have doors on the back, which is interesting.
So if you guys check into it, be sure and make sure they can dump it, because that would say it doesn't matter.
Who's Kendrick, who's Kendrick using?
Kendrick's using Sunshine still. By the way, for Sunshine or maybe Inland Northways, but regardless, it's still gonna be the, like, I mean, I think we're still allowed to use inland for roll-off boxes, but I don't know, I don't remember exactly, because the old contract was worded that you have to use late as sanitation at the time. The new contract might not have that same language in it. I don't remember exactly what that language said, but regardless, they will both have the same, like, if you were putting brush in it, they will have one like what's at the bulky waste site.
Gotcha.
Does they, you know, essentially, the reason with the sludge must be just because it's sludge. We never had a leak at the, when I worked for the landfill. So the thing would be defined in an area where we could camera it or something like that where, because then if we have license plates, then, you know, they can be issued a ticket.
Is there a way that we could put a camera up down around the poles down here, the garbage site down here?
Right in that white spot where the trucks park. You'd probably be looking at a wireless, like a game camera or something.
And that way, it's on the highway, you can actually watch better.
And they use it all the time down there. There's always people down there. The mayor's down there all the time, every morning, like...
It's something that would be much more monitored and...
Well, and I have a question. So there's a spot next to the fence where we go into the wastewater plant. Would there be room up there and then we could have a camera monitor off of the, the city shop? Or something like that?
We'd have power there for sure.
Yeah, so it might be, because the game cameras, they don't get in that field of motion, it won't go off.
Gotcha.
And they're down there, putting on all day.
And over the weekend, they're down there when they're on call. So I think, like, if that's something that we were looking at, that would be my recommendation, just because we could have power with a better camera system to monitor it if, you know, if there's room, which you would need, it's like 10 feet by probably 40 feet, because the truck can pull forward toward the city shop. So you just need enough space past that gate where you're not blocking anything to set it down where citizens can get around it.
So the fire department has two or three cameras set up already. So one's on that light pole right in front, and it does have feel the vision over our driveway in front of the shop.
So maybe put one, like, if they were loading it, depending on if they were loading it from the city shop side or from the wastewater side, pointing at the back door so you can, you can kind of see, you know, what's going on and get a license plate number if there's trash in there. Because it's a thousand dollar fine for, that's considered littering.
Right, okay.
As long as it didn't have a good sign on it, a thousand dollar fine for garbage.
Yeah.
And make sure you put up a sign that, because we did this at the landfill, people would throw garbage in the brush pile. We put up, it was just a dummy camera, but put a sign that said, "This is video surveillance." And that, you know, they look up and they see a camera, even though it's hooked to nothing, it did deter a lot of people.
And the fire department already pays for internet, so that camera can be connected to their internet for storage and for reviewing, you know, in the log, so that's totally possible.
I like it.
I do too.
Yeah.
I think it would be very helpful.
Great suggestion, guys, great.
That's, that's, yeah, I mean, I think, like, you know, I've been thinking about this because there is times, you know, that, like, well, Logan Bag's lying, but, you know, like, when Logan moves on and I have to start packing my own stuff.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. But, yeah, I think that, I mean, we could go look at that, just, because I know what the requirements are. There should be enough, plenty enough room to put it there.
The status of our burn pile is a little bit in limbo. Steiger's failed to sell Browning's cut stock, where the burn pile's actually on their land, it's not on city land. So if that does actually sell, the new owners may or may not want us being that, they're having access to that property. The other thing is I did mention to Dick earlier that that might be a piece of ground the city might be interested in purchasing. It's nothing but river bottom. It's not attached to the middle property. So I'm just throwing, I'm just giving you all the information that if we had a burn, or a brush bin that was emptied every week, then we would need to have a back there either, also there's...
So, this is the garbage side we're talking, just another quick question. When the new wastewater plant goes in, is there, are they taking any of that room? Like, is there a way to, and when we looked at...
They take it this way.
Well, what I'm wondering is, because when we worked for, when I worked for the landfill, some of the things that we talked about for citizens is gating an area and giving out the citizens a code.
Oh, I see.
So that is, they actually, one of Inland North Waste things was 24-hour bulky waste site where the citizens would have a code where they'd punch in their code, and then the gate would open, they could go in and throw it. So there's nobody driving from Elk River. I mean, there, it might be piled up along the fence, but that's a way to fence it, put it in more of a hidden area.
All right, you're talking for brush?
For brush.
Because Amanda told me at one point in time that she didn't, there were reasons that I don't recall, but she didn't, we couldn't have a community burn pile. It was just too much brush.
Right, we, the, yeah, we cannot have a community burn pile. What I'm saying is a community dumpster where they could go in.
Oh, just...
So the dumpster would be fenced where they could go in, throw it in the dumpster. It's only our citizens, it's not...
Like a storage unit, you have a kind of a pool and...
Yeah, exactly. That way there, it's more protected. We have cameras on the outside, so then, and monitoring it, so we can see if somebody getting in there, throwing trash. We'll have more control over it and it'll be, you know, and then we could, you know, position it however we would work with the new wastewater plant. Just, just a thought, just throwing it out there.
Well, when they tear the old plant out, there will be a lot of space right there where the old, where the plant is now. The new one's gonna be kind of back and to the side where the shop, behind the shop more.
Yeah, so it'd be perfect if they could put at least one or two bins there.
There will be quite a lot.
At least if they have room for one, and then when they come, they could drop the empty, pick up the full, so just like they used to do down here. But, you know, that's just, just something to consider, because that way there we have more control over it and we can have it when we need it, you know?
So speaking from the JCIA hat and the fire department hat, if we want town to be cleaner, have less flammable things around, that kind of thing, I think having access to a burn pile or a bin would be a way to encourage people to do that.
Slash required?
Uh, well, I mean, it just, I think people want to do cleanup and yards and do things, and I think, you know...
Sometimes it's, it's hard when the bulky waste site is every other Saturday, you know, like, with me traveling and stuff, I don't always make it. So it'd be nice, like, if I mow my lawn on Sunday, you know...
Just get rid of then.
Just get rid of then and sit have it roll over till who knows when.
I think these are real great thoughts. I do think that initially you're gonna have a easier time monitoring where, by the wastewater than you would down there. However, if people get accustomed to using it, and our, our community tends to appreciate things, I think, I think if we ended up moving it down there, they'd be more appreciative of it and maybe police it a little better by then too. But I think starting out, at least at the wastewater, like you're suggesting, would be a good start. And I think we should go at least our April to October.
What size bin would we need?
Uh, I would, well, my recommendation would be at least a 30. Start with a 30. The 22, I think, would be, might be too small, and I would do, I would do a 30 and I would do it as an on-call thing. So when it gets like half or three-quarters, just have them put them, put us on the list, and then they'll swap it out. Because, like, if you go every week, there's some weeks that we're gonna be paying for half. So I would put it on an on-call thing and just call when it's half to three-quarters full. And we'll get a better idea as we move through the summer, because as the summer kind of draws down, there's gonna be a few weeks where it's not as bad, but that's, that's my...
Yeah, because people are outside right now cutting brush.
Right, right. Yeah, that's just, just my recommendation from seeing what I saw in the garbage world and having dealt with Kendricks when I worked for, like, uh...
Appreciate it.
Yep.
If you guys don't mind, I got another question. Unless someone else has any. Uh, we, on this budget, we're talking about doubling the attorney fee, and I just kind of want to get everybody's thoughts on that.
Which fee is that?
The attorney, the attorney payments.
Oh, okay.
What's that number?
What page is that on? What number? Three, four, five?
What's the number there?
Unless it was changed.
What are you looking at?
Um, I was...
105205?
No, that's accounting, sorry, I went wrong.
I remember it from the first, yeah.
It's toward the back.
Unless it was, unless it was changed. Were any of these changed, Bun, since we saw them?
No.
Okay.
Under, um, operations?
Legal fees went from five to 10.
What, what's the number?
105200, it's on the first page. I gave you copies, it's right underneath your agenda.
Okay, oh, okay, yeah.
Oh.
1052, 52.
The reason why I did that was because we, we went through a lot last year with everything going on with the gym thing and stuff. You know, we're paying a lot in attorney.
And our new attorney costs more than what Kend did.
Well, if he's, is he planning on...
And, and it's not like we're gonna, you know, if we don't use it, that's fine. At least we get a good idea of what Todd's...
Yeah, so is he, which I'm totally in favor of him coming to the meeting.
He said he'd come as long as we, if we needed him and we wanted him.
I mean, I don't know that that's necessarily bad, so...
No, I like the idea that he wants to be involved more, because there's a lot of times, when he was here last time, we asked him a lot of questions the whole time.
Right, so we have...
Have me out of the pool to come to this meeting.
He told me he plans to come to the meetings. Yeah, I think it's practice.
We were hoping it was a bath, but we don't care.
We're, we're meeting right now, could you just give it?
Okay, so...
That, that's my question, is if we're gonna need those if he's, if we're gonna have more, and he's gonna be, because what does he charge to come to a meeting? Do we know yet?
I might have a bill of his.
Is that travel tax?
I'd work that one out.
Should he charge us?
No, that was for... That was all for me. This one was for me.
And how much was it?
Uh, $386.
That's when he came to introduce himself?
Yes, and the review letters from Cynthia, and most of it's just Cynthia and Smith.
Oh, yeah.
And stuff like that. He reviewed all that stuff. Um, so it's about a hundred bucks an hour?
A hundred bucks?
Section of, for attorney.
No, because he has hours, two hours at $200 for reviewing.
That might not have been when he was at the meeting, but that was just up in...
Yeah, but still, two hours. I don't know what he charges for meetings, because it's a different...
Well, so...
And we have to pay for travel.
Sure.
Sure, and... So anyway, guys, here I live, meeting. And then, anyway, so I, I'm not, I was, wanted to hear you guys' input on what your expectations of the attorney are, and have a public discussion about what we expect we're gonna be paying him and what for. I'm done, and there's nothing wrong with it. I have my own ideas as well. This is our third attorney in, what, two years? So I just kind of want, I think the public, I think the public should know. I assume the public wants to know what we're doing.
Right, and I don't think it's any fault of any attorney that was here, it's just the fact they're just changing their own bed sheets, you know?
Well, if anything, it's our fault, because we're...
No, it's our fault.
We need to vet attorneys, but the point being, back to the budget, is that I think, I'm assuming the public wants to know what's going on with this, and so why do we think it's gonna be, we're gonna need more attorney presence and have to pay more attorney pay?
So I have a thought as to why we're gonna be having more, possibly more fees, like, if we're gonna have him at our meetings, which I think is a good idea, there's gonna be more costs there. If we're gonna have more of the infractions or misdemeanors and stuff where he's gonna have to go to court for whatever, like, drunk vehicles or whatever, that kind of stuff. So I, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to increase our attorney fees anticipating that this is what our first year, you know, that it could be, we're going to be here every time. That's just my thoughts, but I don't know if everybody wants him here at every meeting, or...
Absolutely. You keep an attorney, hang on.
Well, I think that's a council decision or whatever.
Right, I'm just throwing out my, my thoughts.
And that's what I want to hear, because I really want, I suppose, to understand, and myself as well, like, we're gonna, so our plan is, we're thinking we're gonna be utilizing an attorney more.
I like the idea. It makes me feel like we're a little more secure and when we answer questions and we have, you know, have...
There's ordinances, there's state statutes that says why cities have city attorneys. So if you go and look under that statute, it potentially can be responsible for law.
Sure, and simultaneously, and he's not here to hear this, is I would have expectations that if we're raising the money we're gonna pay him, I want these issues resolved. And I don't think we should be afraid to expect that or let him know we expect that.
He knows.
Well, my point is that...
Is he supposed to be working on it?
We're doubling our attorney payout, we're doubling our fees. I want to make sure everyone understands the why and what we're gonna get out of it, and I want to make sure we do get it out.
Switching gears, Bonnie, I have a question on the travel, just to educate me, if you guys are new. How it goes from a thousand to $6,000 on 1050 to 30, the meeting and travel? Just, does that include, like, when we have to send someone to training or...
No, it went to, it was 11,000, we put it back down to 6,000.
Yeah, so it went back, okay, there you go. But that's like when someone has to do a certificate or something or change?
No, usually if we went to conferences and stuff, and like, last year I went down to Salt Lake City or Crowell and did a week's training with myself and stuff, so, um, that's, that cost.
Covers that.
Um, we have districts up in Moscow or Lewiston, um, we have, um, meetings with AIC.
Yeah, I thought that was on pocket. I didn't know the city paid for that, I thought it was on pocket.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question, and I don't want to jump ahead anyone. Christmas lights.
Hey, don't knock Christmas.
We're, uh...
We had talked about the Christmas lights, and we wanted to add some more funds just for the fact that we would like to get nicer ornament things.
Well, we're tripling the funds, and I read that.
Which one are you...
But it doesn't mean that we're gonna use everything, but we would like to, we've already gotten better lights, you know?
I remember buying them, they buy them everywhere.
But I thought, we, we wanted to get something that goes across the road, and we wanted to change the lights.
So these are for, these are not for the park. These are for the, the main street. Yeah, the city, the park, the stuff that we do in the park.
Because we were talking about getting new ones for holes that we have, because those are really old.
So if we got those, though...
And then match it with the, what goes across the, we've got that wire.
The Christmas lights are nice, they're really nice, but we're, if we're tripling this, I just want to know, what's happening to the lights every year, and if we buy them now, are they gonna be used next year, or are we gonna have to...
Yeah, use them all the time.
We're not gonna have to triple the...
What do you mean, I pay for them myself.
So when I, when we got lights for the park...
The lighting that we raised and...
That's for the park.
I do more for the lighting the park than anyone else.
That's not in this budget, though?
No, I do it myself.
We're talking about the budget, though. Anyway, go ahead, Nick.
So when we, when we bought lights for the park, we did donations, we bought upgraded lights, so we just use our same ones down there every year. This budget is to, uh, because last year we didn't use any of the budget, we gave it all to the city to give, to upgrade the stuff across the street. So they're just trying to upgrade our old stuff from the eighties, early nineties.
Or anything like that.
Like, yeah, for Main Street is what that is for. So, and I believe that if we get a higher quality, then we shouldn't have to spend.
Last longer.
Yeah, so that's just, that's why I think they're, they're increasing some.
Well, I think we have them.
Yeah, but that's for Main Street, not the park.
With all the lights that we have gotten for Main Street and for the Snoopy things and everything, we've got more commercial lights, but they were more expensive. But, you know, we just would like to get at least something that goes across, because we have talked about that. I think that we're trying to face out this, right?
Well, I'm just saying, offering some of the...
This is not, it's not necessarily one time for...
Right, and that's a valid, valid question to ask, and we should be put down there.
Right, yeah. No, I know, I was just, yeah, no, I'm just saying that it's not for the parks and, and I think, whatever, whatever. I'm just, I'm just explaining what I'm hearing.
So I'm really, this is, this is basically off of this, and this was what would be published if you wanted to look at this. Um, but it's not set to still, because we have the hearing, and this won't get published until, what, September?
Well, we have to publish, we have to publish at the end of this month to do the hearing, so, if it's not, but, yeah. Tonight we will be tentatively approving the budget, but it can still change if necessary before it's finally...
And then you guys said that there are specific projects we're doing in the park, for park maintenance? For the park maintenance budget?
Um, the park maintenance budget just generally involves replacements, winter ends, fixing water lines, the pump, bathrooms, the bathrooms, the toilets get broken, the concession stands, uh, you know, upgrades and whatever, just, I mean, there's... There's just a lot down there.
So the, since you're on the front line of that, the going from the 4,500 to 7,000, you think that's right involved part of what you're gonna need?
I'd say it needs to go on some measure. We spent $389 yesterday at four, so...
Okay.
And, you know, there's 12 stations on each controller, and each station has between four and nine sprinklers. So, you know, it's just a continual, you know, repair. And Bonnie said that if we don't use it, then you...
So Bonnie, can you explain that, please, a little, that if we don't use it, then what?
It goes into your unreserved funds. So whatever we make as a revenue and what we spend, and the difference goes to your unreserved, and that's why our unreserved keeps going up, because we, you know, like, Justin knows that we're doing the place fire group, so he's not going out on or purchasing, um, new and stuff to fix stuff. He tries to fix himself. With the water plant being new, we have, we cut the budget a couple of years ago after it got complete, because we figured when it was done, that we wouldn't have to spend as much money to maintain it. So basically, that's what happens. And also, you know, like, park, streets, library, fire department, and admin is all under the general fund. So, like, at the park, something happens at the park and we have to buy all brand-new sprinklers. And we, we go over budget on the park, that's okay, because it's still umbrellaed under the general fund.
So does the unreserved fund, is that the general fund, is that the same thing?
No, it's unreserved.
But it's, so it just, it's collected from residents, and it goes into, if it doesn't get spent, it's unreserved, but then what happens to it?
It, it's, it just sits there until we, there's a need, a need for it. You know, like, when I was talking about the 200,000 last month, to go into the sewer, what I would do is I would take that money from the reserve, put it in for the budget now, so that if you do that, you're gonna have to end up opening the budget if you don't, if you do it later. Um, it's like, one time we had to open the budget for, um, was it the dump truck? No, um, the auditors. We were constantly losing money off of water and wastewater, it was always a negative. So, um, Tony had talked, and we opened the budget, and we transferred money from the unreserved, which is actually a general, and moved it over to water and wastewater, so that we would be in the black, but not, you know, and then moved from there. And the last couple of years, we've done really well with the budget, the audit. We're not in the hole as bad. Water still is because of that stupid loan. Wastewater was in the black the last two years. So, um, anytime you move money from one fund to another, you have to open the budget. But you can't move, like, water fund to sewer fund. You can only move the money that we have as backup that has not been designated for any, which is considered the unreserved ones.
I think you just accident, maybe accidentally said that the unreserved and the general are the same thing, but they're not, is that right?
No, they're not.
So that money, we buy it for the park maintenance, or we collect it, and it's used for park maintenance, even if it's not spent, what, this year? It's used for park, park maintenance at some point in the future?
Depends upon if we keep it at 7,000.
But if you, what I'm saying, if you collect 7,000, we spend 3,000.
Right.
So that money's gonna sit in a fund.
No, it's considered unreserved, and it means that you did not use it. So it goes back into unreserved, so that...
So what can unreserved be spending?
Anything you want, but you have to open budget to move it.
Understood.
Like, when we did the truck, we also had to take money from the unreserved to pay for the truck, but we had to open the budget to put the money in capital outlay, because capital outlay is for anything that, um, is, capital expenditure, so to speak. capital expenditure, so to speak, um, and it gets depreciated.
So our auditor told us that we have three years of funding, and mo, and according to the government accountability office, we should have four months. Where did that money come from?
Not spending. Holding on.
So we're holding on...
Don't judge your money. You have to judge it.
So we're holding on, we have three years of, of a fund, because we're collecting and raising and raising, and it's going into a fund, and we're recommended to have four months. We have three years worth.
Correct.
So my concern is that why are we raising it so much if there is a way that we could actually spend some of that money that we're actually being recommended as being unreserved?
Okay, so, we could, um, but, yeah, the big thing is, is the two hundred thousand.
The money that you're talking about moving around so that we don't have to raise the sewer rates is...
Right. Because if you do it for four years, you've already got eight hundred thousand. That doesn't include whatever kind of interest we're gonna get, which will fluctuate. But it's interest, it's not stocks, it's never gonna go negative, we're never gonna lose that eight hundred thousand.
It pays off.
If the loan is seven hundred and fifty, we can pay it off.
Buy the interest on it.
And we will not be penalized, and then all the interest and that extra fifty thousand can stay. If you look at your other deposits.
Can I?
If you look at your other deposits, you will see how much we made just last month.
Since.
The loan, the loan, you're talking about the loan for the sewer? What loan are you talking about, that we can pay off the loan?
The wastewater.
Yeah, sewer. So basically, we would be using that money to, instead of having to raise the rate so much, we'd be using that money to make money to pay off the loan without having to raise the rate so much. So that's, that's why it's not a bad thing to have extra money like this, so we can move that around to do what, what Bonnie's suggestion, and I think was what Stillman's gonna talk about.
And you've got a copy of last year's audit. On one of those pages, it talks about the loans, and it was since two thousand and four. It's not, doesn't end until two thousand thirty-four. We are gonna end up paying a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in interest on that eight hundred thousand dollar loan just from this year going forward. Not to mention how much extra we've had to pay, where if we can pay it off, we're gonna save more money that we can do more things for the community with.
So the public didn't get that, though, and that's why I'm asking the questions, because I want everyone to understand, I don't even understand it, what, why we've collected so much money, why we're raising the fees on, our fees, and why we're doubling many of these accounts, and yet we're sitting on all this money.
But I don't make that decision.
I, I'm not saying you do, but you're, you're the one here to explain it to the public, and I appreciate you doing that.
Bonnie wants to...
And it's like with Tony, Tony explained it too, and he had talked about doing stuff with it. But like, all your LGIPs, um, if you look at your other deposit, it will tell you what fund it goes to. There's like four waters, um, a sanitation, and a general fund is two hundred thousand dollars. Right there is a general fund of two hundred thousand we've never used in the whole time. We have never taken money out of any of those LGIPs, not to mention, um, the, almost three hundred and twenty-five thousand that we have in CDs and potlatch. And we keep gaining interest, and we just keep rolling them over. We've never taken them out, we've never used them, because we don't have to, because we have all this unreserved funds.
So I have a question. But if we, if we have this money saved, and we have a catastrophic failure or something, we, we do have this money to fall back on? Like if the government shuts down, we're not getting tax money from Lake Tahoe County or something?
And when you have four, close to four years, if not more, so we can run this city without help.
Right, so I see your point, and I think that it's not well-known to the public as to why it's important to have at least four months, but where we're at with having this extra money is if there is some kind of catastrophic failure with the government or city, we, we can still provide for our citizens. We can still provide them water, sewer, and stuff like that, if we don't have any money coming in from... There's a lot of our tax bases that comes from Lake Tahoe County. So if there's nothing coming in from the government, we still have, and correct me if I'm wrong, we still have this money to provide for our citizens.
But if we put, start putting two hundred thousand in every year, even though we're gaining every year, and we could pay that loan off, and we're not dumping money into interest. It's like trying to pay your car off early, so you, you're not paying all that interest.
Well, I appreciate the explanations. My point of view is that since we have all that money, and it's far more than it seemed to be recommended, we can afford to be more conservative on how we raise these accounts, and we can be more precise. We can afford to do that. So if we do run into not such a catastrophic event, but we need more money, it's there also.
So if we say left the park budget the way it was, and we needed more of their stuff in capital outlay, correct, that we could use to cover it?
Well, capital outlay, yes, but also you're unreserved. We could open the budget, and we could pay for anything. It's like with the truck. The whole truck thing was just a fiasco, and it, it happened like two months after the beginning of that year. Then we opened the budget, moved the money.
Okay, yeah, but what I'm asking is, if we trim some of these up and we end up going over, we're still protected?
Correct.
I think that's...
Yes, and, and I think we could trim them up. I think we could trim them up a lot. I don't know that I'm gonna get the support on that, but I think we could trim them a lot. Because I don't really, I guess I'm not understanding why, if the government accountability office is saying four months, why we're reaching for four years. I guess, I'm, I'm...
And, and the big thing is, is that, um, like with the water, yes, we have cut the water way down compared to when it was, when we were doing the improvement. Wastewater, we can't cut it down, because it's gonna cost a lot to get that done.
Yeah.
But once it's done, then you can start for seeing how much money is getting spent. And that's what a budget is for, is you see every year how much you're spending, and that's why when, when you get your budget here is like actual from last year, even though it says ten twenty-three, it's still, I did it as of the end of June. So like, um, example, the, um, library, or maybe not even the library, but admin, um, the admin one is, we've, we've spent sixty-seven thousand, and our budget was, is a hundred and fifty-four. So we only have three more lines. But we also have the library, the public safety, everything else that we have. You know, it's like the, the fire department, we give them extra money over here, and Clipper makes sure he spends it, which is good, you know?
Can I make a statement?
Yeah.
So when we got rid of the old Chevys and bought the new Chevy and the new Toyota, our maintenance budget went way down, because we weren't having to maintenance them. So like when we bought the new, uh, dump truck, our maintenance budget went down as well. So I think as we move forward, the newer stuff, we won't have to have as much money in the budget for repairs. Because I know that's what I'm saying in the...
Like next year, our Christmas budget should drop down, unless we get better.
Right, some of our other stuff, as we move forward, the sewer project will turn to, yeah.
I have one, one question on this topic. So how many months are we gonna discuss Bonnie transferring that two hundred thousand so we can pay off the loan?
Well, I think Stillman's, Stillman's gonna talk about that as well.
Well, we just need to do it for the budget, for, because we can't transfer the money until October first.
Okay.
Because...
At least they're the pre-approved.
Yeah, because otherwise, we would have to open the budget and, and move that unreserved to general, or to wastewater, so...
Is your question good answered?
I did, and I just wanna say, I, you know, when I brought up, well, about the, the yard waste bin, you know, I appreciate you guys are open to ideas, and you really are, and you came up with a solution, I think. And I wanna look for more ways we can spend money, okay, for our public. I just have a hard time when I look at the overall budget and seeing some of these accounts, and saying, okay, on one hand, I wanna vote for this, because I, I got something I've been fighting for, thanks to you guys. On the other hand, there's a lot of these accounts, and I'm trashing my head, going, why is this up so much when we have this money? But, again, I, I'm not the treasurer. I respect which of you. Uh, I just think that I and everyone needs an explanation, you know, and...
Well, that's why we talked about it for so many months, is to figure that out.
Absolutely, but...
Like water is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand budget, and so far, we've only spent ninety-two. And because we have a new system, and we are not spending as much.
And this is one of our first real, true conversations, I think, about it. That's what I...
Over slowly approved.
That's what I'm kinda nudging, like, let's, let's dig in, let's, and, you know, like I said, if there, and if every one, every penny of this needs to be raised, then every penny needs to be raised. Just, I just always wanna remind that this money's being collected, no matter what, no matter what account we shuffle it into, we're taking it out of people's pockets already.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure we're all going through this and saying, do we really need to raise this, even if it's just an extra thousand?
Not to mention, uh, the revenue sharing, the property taxes, all that stuff goes into the funds.
And that comes from Lake Tahoe County, not, like, all of our property taxes is paid to, given to us by Lake Tahoe County. They collect the property tax.
Right.
And some of that stuff. So some of this stuff isn't us raising it, it's some of it coming from the county themselves.
And, and right with sharing, we outside of liquor.
Right.
That all goes into the general fund. It does not go into water, wastewater, or whatever, so...
So I, just as an ultimate overarching question, and I'll move on. What do you, what is the expectation of what, ultimately what that general fund's gonna be spent on? The one that's, and, and what are, where are four years versus four months? What is that gonna ultimately be spent on? Where's that money going?
That should go to park streets and, um, buildings.
That's a good answer.
So, especially streets, you know, I mean, look at, we're just, if you look at, uh, the panels, sixty-four thousand for the asphalt and stuff.
Okay, I like...
We need to make our roads and our sidewalks nice, and we have to bend this year, and, but we haven't gone over budget, and that's nice.
I like, I have one more follow-up to that. When is that money gonna be spent on our residents like that? I think that's a great answer.
But that's up to you guys, because you're the council.
Right, and I'm asking, when...
Where's that crystal ball?
Where, realistically, when are we gonna spend this money on the public that we've already taken out of their pockets? And, and I'm, you might not know the answer, and if we don't, let's say, we don't know when that's coming.
Yeah.
But we need to spend that money on our residents, it's...
Hopefully, more residents will be warmed up to the idea of not being afraid to step forward and get put on the agenda, because they don't wanna be put on the agenda, yet they want things resolved, and they have to help us help them.
Or we can do what we're here to do, and make sure we're spending the money that we raised on...
How they want it, how they want it, how they do it.
Yeah, and I, I would like to be at the theme of what, what we vote on, you know, what we vote on for this. What, what are we doing, not with just the money we're raising, but what are we doing with the money we've already taken out of their pockets? And when can they expect that, to see the benefits of that? And I'm done, thank you.
I guess she had to call the order.
Your honor, to give our meeting started.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanna start out saying thank you to everyone this year tonight. It really matters, my serving.
If everybody will be able to touch it.
Minutes.
Minutes.
Minutes. Um, I see on the minutes mark, I don't know how I missed this last month, um, about the traffic on the bike, uh, bike. Probably not seeing so much traffic now in this heat, but I can see it from my window as well, the vehicles on the bike path, it probably shouldn't be there. Are you still seeing this?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I had, I called the sheriff's department. Would've been the month of May for sure.
Spring, twenty times?
Yeah, uh, but, well, no, multiple times, but definitely...
Yeah, it happens all the time.
Definitely been there. And, and it's, it's the same small group of people, mostly, mostly kids.
I see, other than maybe a dirt bike here and there, we know, you know, kids, the kids, I guess. Um, I see two different, um, green gators. Are they both belong to the city? The green gators that you see on the bike path?
The city has one.
True.
The ci, city owns two?
Dick has one, I guess. The city has one.
So we do have a green gator, I do?
Yes, we do, yeah.
And then the other one's yours, Dick? The other gator's yours?
Mm-hmm.
I mean...
I don't know.
I mean, do you own a green gator?
I don't know nothing about it, so...
Okay. Because I see you on the path in a green gator, so I was just wondering if you owned one or not?
I guess the question is, are the ones that are on the path insured or not?
They're registered by the city.
Insured, and, and fall under the city's insurance.
Are they? Anyone?
That's what I'm asking. That'd be my concern.
Our gators, it's, it's dry grip, and we have to go through all our, all our equipment and everything, and buildings and everything, to make sure that we have everything. Like, we got the new dump truck, Wendy called them, and, and we have a booklet in there.
For our, for city vehicles. Are both green gators cities, or one sticks?
One sticks.
So only one's insured, it'd be on...
Correct.
So what would happen hypothetically, if the one that wasn't insured? It'd be like any vehi, it'd be like any vehicle on track.
I have more insurance on that than what the city's got on nerves, I'll guarantee it.
Personal insurance?
That doesn't, that's not...
The city BS.
Are you, are you...
Oh.
Have approved the minutes.
We have approved the minutes. Do you have any other questions on the park?
Nope.
I make the motion to accept the minutes from July, uh, July twenty-fourth. What is all the Wi-Fi computer systems?
That's where our phones and getting the, um, hookup stuff, he's gotta get everything ready. So, um, we need Wi-Fi phones, so...
Does, does this have anything to do with the microphones that you have?
Yes, we're gonna do, we all have nice microphones.
Awesome.
We have a party in here, we have a conference room in here, where we all, the lawyer, or...
Which we're gonna need more.
Yes, yeah, so if he can't make it, or he's like, last week, he was on vacation last week, yeah. So it was hard getting a hold of him, that we could just, we'd call him wherever he is, and have him...
I see that Julieta Market was a little higher than normal when we pulled up the dump truck.
Lower.
Lower?
We didn't know any of that.
We pulled the dump truck too, once.
Yeah.
It was heading into the wilds.
Make motion to accept the tables for the month of June twenty-fourth.
One second.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Kimball, Business and Affairs Director with Avista. Joining me, and our one patron is Jason Johnson, who's our Foods Operations Manager, and happens to be the mayor of New York. Don't hold that against him, please. I think he's doing a pretty good job of this. So tonight, just wanted to give you an update, uh, on some of our wildfire resiliency work that we're doing. You might be aware of some recent media around what we call public safety power shots, which is essentially coactively de-energizing, uh, one of our electric feeders into a given community, based on a, a number of criteria around wildfire hazards. And so we have copies of the PowerPoint that I was gonna share with you, but again, we've been working on a wildfire resiliency plan for about ten years. It includes four, four key elements. One is really about hardening our grid, so swapping out wood holes to steel holes, fiberglass crossarms, and more durability, more fire resistance in our system. Secondly, we're spending tens of millions of dollars now on vegetation management, so in, in a rising ways. We're trimming more trees. Every year, we inspect every mile of our system for vegetative infringement. So again, we've been a lot more serious about that. We've always been very serious. But again, we'll get calls from people and say, hey, why are you trimming my tree? There is a reason why we do that. The second is more around situational awareness, but what we are using essentially predictive analytics. There's a lot of good information out there from a number of sources, whether it's the National Weather Service, the Forest Service, National Fire Incident and Command Service, et cetera. A number of agencies that provide us information about the current conditions, wildfire conditions on the ground. We're also considering setting up weather stations on our system as well. So we can mount some of those weather systems within our transmission system within substations, et cetera. And then finally, the operational response, that how we're providing protection to both our system and equally or more important to our communities. So, so again, that's sort of our four-pronged approach. We talked a little bit more about that. And it's really around both protecting our public, our communities, as well as our own system. As you all know and seeing the the media, California, whether you like them or not, kind of set the standard for this unfortunately through a number of very unfortunate fires over the, over the years. The Paradise Fire being the most impactful some years ago. Avista wasn't certainly looking first to the, to the front on this. We've been dragging our feet, kind of felt like our fire safety operations was pretty, pretty resounding and resilient already. But our utility commissions, our insurance carriers, regulators, you name it, are all asking and expecting all of the utilities to adopt a public safety power shut off. So I know Howard adopted theirs last year. So we are, I think we're the last investment utility in the Northwest to actually adopt a public safety power shut off. But again, you know, part of it is we, you know, why would we use it, how would we use it? Again, and I would tell you, it's more like a nuclear option. It's a last resort that we would rarely have ever used. And part of that is, well, how would that impact Juliana? So what we've done is mapped out all of our feeders on our system. You see a map in here, our system overview and back end map. And you can see a number of color, different colors on our system. On those feeders down here in Leito County, we just have a small stretch that's actually rated above a tier zero. So the lowest fire risk in our systems are based here, mostly in the Flues, women and Leito counties, Adams County as well. So we rate those and again, part of our analytics weighs some of that information as well. So you can kind of see that on the map. And then how do we, how do we evaluate? This is always the question. We have this, what we call a fire safety mode. So we look at things like wind speed and direction. We look at relative humidity, vegetation material and how dry it is, what we call fuel conditions. Human impact potentials, I mean, does this feeder essentially serve a community? What might that look like should there actually be some sort of ignition on the system? And then kind of fire preparedness level. So we look at a number of factors. But again, it isn't generated from a computer. It's ultimately up to our leadership on the fifth floor to make a determination on a public safety power shut off. So essentially, it would be a preemptive determination to de-energize a system into a given community on a given feeder. But like I said, the likelihood of it happening here in the Flues is pretty remote. I would say it isn't ever, never, but again, we have wildfire danger here, you know, you've seen wildfires here as well. But as far as our system igniting something, it's very unlikely it would happen. But again, so part of it is encouraging our, our communities to be fire resilient. Do you have backup systems for your water wastewater? We're looking at essential services like hospitals, senior centers. Do we have backup generation to them should we de-energize the system? So we're out there looking at that, mapping that out as well. And then the follow-up to that is, we'll set up what we call community resource centers. Should we just say we de-energize the electric feed into Juliana? Where can community members go to get information to get a cool bottle of water to charge their cell phones? So we're setting up sites within those impacted areas. So that isn't processed as well and we hope we never have to use it. But this is all pre-event. Again, the whole point of this is that we want to prevent a wildfire. Should wildfires occur, then when we get out of the way, we do what we do best with our, our folks. We let the Red Cross or the emergency procedure do what they do. But this is essentially pre-attentive. And we know it sounds pretty intentional, but at the same time, we want to protect our communities as much as possible, as well as protect our system.
Another question, I'm a little confused. I'm reading the first camp that you gave out, the public safety power shut offs. So on the second side of page one, is there a max degenerated time period? If and when Avista decides to just not sugarcoat and shut off power? Is there a max timeframe that power would be off for a certain given area, if there's not a fire?
Sure, I'll give you the answer. It depends. It depends on the situation. So that, you know, if it's a weather event that, you know, a dry cold front blowing through, which I think we're going to see on Thursday. What does that mean? What's the duration? Is that a twelve-hour event, is it a six-hour? And if we decided to preemptively shut off a feeder, we would base it on the duration of that event or the minimum. Again, once we get out of that risk period, then we would re-energize.
So the weather's going to dictate how long the power will be off?
Weather will hardly dictate that.
Gotcha.
Conditions on the ground, wind speed, et cetera, yeah.
So fire does not have to be in progress, it does not have to be a live fire, or it's a shut off power?
No, there, there, Dr. Big, there shouldn't be a live fire.
I mean, that would make sense while you, like in Hawaii, why you would cut off the juice, the source. But I'm hearing Avista say, no, we just might do it because weather's not looking good and we clearly have a fire. Is that correct?
Right. There's a number of factors. So if you see here, so we have essentially this fire safety mode. So it's an elevated series of steps in how we determine when we might be energized. And again, we are in a blue setting right now, which is our fire safety mode, just our initial setting. And that essentially means if we have trips on our system, we try to reclose at least once on that system. And if it doesn't reclose, then we'll patrol that with manpower. Then we elevate it to an extreme fire safety mode, which will come probably, I don't know, Jason, what do you think?
Well, there again, it's condition-based, but so right now, so the, the blue in your, in your bar graph there, that's your fire safety mode that we've used historically. So that's the same thing you've seen all summer long, all across Rising Territories. We used to call it diamond mode. It's now based right in the lower fire safety mode. In the wintertime, you'll see a trip, a reclose, a trip and another reclose. And you're saw your power flicker a couple of times during those events. We don't do that in the winter or in the summertime. There's too much risk per fire. So we're in this, this initial mode now. Then when we get to the orange, that's where it goes back, kind of like the PSPS, is it's weather and wind and fire risk dependent. And when we elevate those, those settings. And our hope is we elevate them, as soon as the storm front passes, we go back to the blue where we have that, that opportunity to reclose. Because we want the power to stay on.
So Avista doesn't want to be guarded with thousands of calls. So where should a resident of that given area turn to? Is there a radio station and they don't have, you know, gate to TBI?
That's a great question.
Yeah, we need communication, so.
So again, we encourage you to get our app. We have an outage map that will.
An outage map?
Yeah, it's, it's on my Avista.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, okay, and then you can download that outage map as well.
As long as you have power and your device is there.
Actually devices, I know, I know, we're talking with emergency management about cell towers and how we keep those powered as well. But yeah, we'll have more information out there. The challenge, I think, will be, you know, just a typical outage that we still have in the summer. And it might confuse our customers, like, hey, I thought they were going to call me if this was a public safety power outage. Why is my power off? I never got the call. It's likely that was just a typical outage. But again, because we're in this elevated fire safety mode, we don't always have that immediate restoration.
Is a text messaging program in line?
I'm sorry.
More of a text messaging program?
Yes, well, you can sign up for the text alerts and everything else.
That should be encouraged.
Yeah, and it's, it's in the handouts.
All right, thanks.
Great question, so.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of general questions. One is if California is the model, why would we do anything California? Their power shut off was a disaster. And we don't want Idaho to burn up.
That's why we were last.
You know, I can't.
Did it stop California from burning up?
It could have.
You know, part of the challenges, yeah, we, we do a pretty aggressive vegetation management. PG&E didn't do that. Plus, they have a lot more wildland urban interface development. People are moving out to the mountains and the trees, you know, we have some of that. Thankfully, not as much as California.
So we're in a better position overall than hell, very good.
We have different weather too. We don't have those crazy San An winds and some of those big coastal fronts that just blow through. But nevertheless, it happens. We saw last year up in Medical Lake, a fire, unfortunately, the Greenwood Fire. So again, things can happen. They're not always triggered by an electrical fault. One was, I think, a blue arrow that hit a power, an inland power line, and the other was some other cause. But again, things happen. So we also, part of this is just encouraging wild, wildland readiness for our customers to build defensible space.
So is this a permit program?
Permit?
Permit program, moving board in life, permit?
Yeah, this is our first year, so we're going to learn a lot, we're going to understand.
This comes from Avista or above you, like the government above you?
No, this is, well, our, our utility commissions are inspecting it as well. So, so again, we are, we're fully adopted now. We're going to learn a lot this first season. Hopefully not bad things, but just hopefully, again, there will likely be a few more inconveniences and outages of longer duration. But at the same time, the intent is there to keep our community safe.
Like I have tenants on oxygen and it kind of stinks because you can't have a generator in the apartment.
Yeah, so part of that is, yeah, we, we encourage those medical, medically vulnerable customers to make sure we have them in our system. That doesn't mean we can restore their power any sooner, but we can also help them provide resources to them. Oxygen tanks or make the, make the connection to make sure that they have what they need to stay. Stay safe, stay alive, absolutely.
Do you foresee that our people's bill are going to go up directly because of this and the steps you're going to take to prevent this from happening?
No, no, this is already built into our system and grades, so, but good question. Everything comes with a price, but, you know, in a perfect world, I would love to have, you know, ten million dollars to provide generators to our municipalities to ensure that all of our water wastewater systems have backup generation, that our hospitals, that our senior nursing homes, all that generation. And we hope part of this will drive that.
Unfortunately, there will be a loss of life for a program like this undoubtedly, so.
Yeah.
You know, we have a great Avista guy here, everybody loves him. I'd hate to be that guy if this power got shut off. We would turn, we're not California, we can turn into the stone in here. Like it'd be trite, it'd be insane.
Matt sends, sends his regrets.
He did, he worked over, was that last night, I think? He's the best.
Yeah, he did, he loves his communities and, yeah. We're fortunate to have employees like him.
We're fortunate to have him.
Thank you.
I think.
So we have anything on schedule coming up? Do you have any scheduled for shut off coming up in the area? I have a friend just twelve miles out of Kendrick right now with no power. I don't know what's going on there, though.
Yeah, and so they're, are they in Clearwater?
Yes, I think it's Clearwater.
So Clearwater's went down in Asaka and they're doing the same thing. They have to patrol every inch of the line before they can re-energize it because we're in a high nineties day, there's a twenty hour.
I just got a message going, my house is a hundred watt, I'm freaking out.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, all utilities are looking at that. When there's high fire risk like this, you don't want to close and do a fault and start a fire.
Amazing, we did this years ago, you know?
Well, we have a lot more equipment now, automation.
Oh, yeah.
Which is good and also bad at the same time. At the end of the day, there's still the, the need for the element. Because again, we, we've talked about using drones to control after a, a duration like that. Is it something we can rely on and trust as well? So we're, we'll experiment with some of that.
It's one of the few places I would want to see some drones.
Yeah, right, and we're, right, we stay right over the right, don't worry.
I think it's imperative that we get out to the community, this phone number, contact information for people who enroll in text alerts. It's massive, so I know I will do everything I can to get the word out, but it's something that is a city body should be doing.
Could we put it on the utilities?
And I, I will send you digital copies of these from patrons.
Well, we can't put that on the utility, but it's the texting.
Just for the knowing.
Yeah, even if it's just update your information, your contact information at Avista, myavista.com or the 1-800 number. Because that's going to be huge, having the right phone numbers, email addresses, you know. Whatever we're going to contact at the meter, whatever information's in that meter account.
We have property here in Juliana, we have twenty-two renters that electricity's included in the rent, so they're not going to get that text alert. The landlord is, who lives in Moscow, if he's even in Moscow, so I'll have to try to figure someone out there.
Yeah, there's some pieces behind.
That was my question.
You know, we have a lot of elderly here, we would have serious death situations.
It's going to happen nationwide, it's going to be a problem. Yeah, not to mention the food spoilage. The food spoilage. It goes all that dairy.
Yeah, you have to disclose it if you have stock in Costco before you shut down.
And I'm sure Costco. Other questions?
Is your, is there a contact, would you be contacted for the questions mentioned?
You can contact me, Wendy has, has my contact information. Absolutely, anytime my phone number, my cell number, share it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, thank you, Council. Again, serving local government, you see the people's working out budgets.
I'll send you a Christmas card, it's a dear, well, thank you.
I used to be a county commissioner in Leito County, so I appreciate what local government does. They really do a great job, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was asked to come and provide an update on the treatment plant project. I have private information to share with you. So the plans and specifications have been approved by DEQ. We re-submitted those in early May and we got our approval letter back from DEQ on June tenth. So as far as DEQ's concerned, the plans and specs are ready to bid. We're still waiting for the same kind of approval from USDA Rural Development. There's sometimes a little bit more backlog on things, so we'll continue to follow up with them on that. But this last submission that we sent to them was addressing a handful of comments and questions that they had. So hopefully this allows them to provide approval. But as a sidetrack, we continue to work on finding the remaining funding for your project. The last time we spoke, the sole avenue that we had for finding the remaining funds for your project was USDA Rural Development. And they had a number of different grant programs that they've tried to procure for your community to get this project fully funded and ready to bid. They have not successfully procured that last piece of funding through rural development yet, but I coordinated with them recently and they're working on another possibility. The good news is, is that DEQ has some set aside ARPA funding. They had set aside for projects that they knew were going to experience cost overruns, which is what your project is experiencing. For those that are more familiar with this, you'll know that the project costs have increased a lot with the inflation that we've seen over the last two and a half years. It's more stabilized in this last year from the bids that we've seen on other projects, so that's good news. But it's meant that projects like yours, I had to go out and find more money before they go out to bid. So anyhow, DEQ made me aware of this program. They were actually asking about the project that we're working on in Kendrick, but Kendrick's about a year behind you. So I said, let's talk about Juliana, because we need to go out to bid on this project. And so we put in a funding request for you, I sent that to Alicia Tapia Campos on May thirty-first. They got back with us and said that things were looking pretty good for them to be able to, and by the way, that ARPA money is grant money. So we're trying to get as much of that as possible. Currently, the only loan that we are hoping that you have to pay back on the project is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan through USDA Rural Development. And depending on how well DEQ is able to respond, we may be able to stay with that or we may have to look at. or we may have to look at possibly having a longer term loan through DEQ. Because they also offered you a loan, but we were hoping not to have to pay that off over time. We were just gonna use that for interim financing. But anyhow, they had to go back and change some of their rules, so they had a board meeting on June twenty-fourth, I think it was, to change some rules to allow them to fund Giulietta with more money. And they were able to change the rules, so now they're trying to decide just how much. And when we checked again with them today, they said that they're hopefully going to make a decision this Thursday. And so we'll find out how much grant money they're able to offer. And hopefully, if they're not able to offer the full, full amount that we need to go ahead and go out to bid, hopefully USDA Rural Development, what they're working on, they can provide even more. If DEQ is able to go ahead and provide that grant and let us know about it this Thursday, technically, you'll have enough money to go out to bid at that point, based on my understanding of what they're trying to offer you. But we want to maximize the grant for your project and minimize how much loan you have at the end. And so I want all of them to squeeze the lemon dry before we're done and we say this is where our final funding situation looks like, so. So I have a letter that was sent to, I think I forwarded this to some of your city staff. I don't know if you received a copy of it, but this was the letter that was sent to DEQ on May thirty-first. It was probably one of the longest letters I've written in a long time, about eight pages. But anyhow, things are looking great. I was thrilled to find out that DEQ had this opportunity, and they are busting their butts for you guys, trying to see if they can get some additional ARPA money for your project. And USDA, even though they haven't been able to come up with additional grant money just yet, they are also working their tails off. They have tried to pursue probably five different possibilities just in the last year alone.
Yeah, and Amanda emailed me saying for information on the audits for twenty twenty-two.
Right, okay, good.
So that she could get that correct information.
Perfect.
So, so she's working real hard for us?
She is, yep. They're doing a phenomenal job, so. I'm feeling like there's a possibility that if DEQ can come through with enough funding by the end of this week, if they're able to hold to that schedule, that we would be able to go out to bid as early as August and start pulling in bids. And if we start bidding in August, bidding for a treatment plant, usually you want to give contractors between thirty and forty-five days to pull their costs together. So we would probably open bid somewhere around, I would say, mid-September. And then we would evaluate those. We would forward a recommendation to you as your engineer. And then at a council meeting following, receiving our recommendation, you would decide if you wanted to proceed with issuing a notice of award to that contractor. The notice of award is not the contract. It's just a notice that, hey, we want to proceed with negotiations with you. So provide us with your insurance and your bonding and a signed agreement. And then that signed agreement would go before the mayor, probably the next council meeting. So we probably wouldn't be starting construction any earlier than maybe October or November of this year. And then construction itself will take a little less than a year and a half. So that's where we're at. For any loan that you have at the end of the project, I think I've said this before, but the first loan payment wouldn't be due until about a year after construction ends. So we've got some time. I did hear all of the budget discussion, but, you know, obviously, you know, we want to make sure that you have enough money in the budget for that first loan payment and every year going forward. Some of the things that we've talked before about, I don't know what all the situation is with some of your other utilities fund-wise, but we're very familiar with your wastewater utility. One of the things that they'll, like USDA Rural Development, will require you to do is to have about a ten percent reserve, so ten percent of what your loan payment is. So if your loan payment's thirty thousand, they want you to have three thousand dollars extra sitting in the budget, just in case. And then they also like you to establish what they call a short-lived assets reserve. And that is looking at things that typically don't last as long as some of the longer components in the treatment plant, like the one that you have now has lasted a long time. But there are smaller pieces and parts to that treatment plant that don't last as long, which Justin very well knows. So, you know, if you have to replace a motor or do something within the first five to ten years, a short-lived assets reserve is meant for that, so that you have money to replace those components without having to go to like DEQ or USDA to get grant loan money to, just to do regular asset replacements. So just a couple of things to chew on, but, yeah, are there any questions about any of that?
So, quick questions. And to your understanding, how is Kendrick able to obtain so much money compared and contrasted to Giulietta?
They don't have money at the moment. They're about halfway with what they need, a little less than halfway.
With their new sewer?
With the new treatment plant project, yes.
And so is ours entirely new? How much of ours is new or how much of ours is actually being remodeled for the whole? Is it entirely new?
Most of it's new. A large portion of your treatment plant is older technology. It's in bad shape. And the other nice thing about putting in a newer system is you can construct that while the old system continues to run and treat the flow through it. And then you can move the flow over to the new treatment processes once those are ready. It does help on the cost to keep it down to do it that way. But rehabbing your existing was also a bit of a black box because you can't drain it down. We don't know what it's gonna look like when you drain it down and you start removing some of that sediment that's been building up in the bottom. And that's something we'll find out during your project. Because if you're familiar with your treatment plant, everything flows from one tank to the next tank, and there's no way to divert that flow and still treat it and meet your permit. We just have to keep it going. And so that's another issue.
So Kendrick is approximately where we're at with funding for a new plant. We're fixing at least part of our old plant, and good on Kendrick. But not very long ago, they were having meetings with us that were pretty desperate sounding. And I mean, I'm just curious to how, a quick explanation if you could please, how that process works? And how, you know, explain please how we weren't kind of left behind in that. And are we being left behind?
No, no. So the discussions that were had before, we're looking at the possibility of regionalizing your two systems together so that you both share a treatment plant. And there are questions and discussion about if you did that, how would it be managed? Would it be managed by the city of Giulietta, managed by the city of Kendrick? Or would you form a district together and you would have individuals from both communities that would hold positions on the board for that district? And we looked at some cost models to see how that would work. Because of elevation and gravity, it made more sense if you were to do a regional facility to do it right here and to have Kendrick's flows come this direction. Part of the problem with that is it's about three miles between your communities. And so you would, or should I say Kendrick, would have to design and construct a sewer main that would bring flows all the way here. And that comes at a cost. It would probably have to go on the pathway that connects your two communities because that has a more consistent gradient or fall between the two communities. And so looking at the cost of just doing that and then adding more infrastructure to your treatment plant, because your treatment plant's not being designed large enough to accommodate Kendrick as well right now. And essentially, we'd have to almost double the size of your treatment plant to bring Kendrick here.
I was at the city council meeting when they voted not to move with us on the whole project a long time ago. They never wanted it, so.
They'll be rewarded for not doing it. And that's.
They haven't been rewarded for doing it. I don't want that to be the way that you view it. They have a long ways to go on their funding. You guys are way closer to having the rest of your funding resolved and to being able to go out to bid. As far as their design and where they're at in the schedule, they're a year behind you. They have funding, the funding that they have pulled together so far that we've been working with them on is a little bit different, the way that it looks. They, you guys have a lot more Army Corps funding, for instance. That's something that they're a bit jealous about. And so we put a request in to see if we could get more for them. You have one point two five million, for instance. They have five hundred thousand. They have the same on CBD grants, which Seda's been helping out with. You have five hundred thousand. They have five hundred, five hundred thousand. Instead of getting ARPA money, they had an ARPA award that was rejected so that they could be funding with leading Idaho funds. And that makes up the bulk of the funding that they have right now. But like I said before, they're still only about halfway there.
Well, I appreciate you explaining that. That was a very good explanation. Thank you.
You bet.
Yes, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. So with what Bonnie's been talking about, having our money make money so that we don't have, so that we can pay off that loan immediately, are we still gonna have to raise funds, like raise our rates to the degree for these backup funds that you're talking about? Or whatever our rate's gonna look like if we're able to do what Bonnie says and pay that loan off that way? Like, I'm just wondering, are we still gonna have to do some kind of rate increase for these reserve funds? Because those reserve funds aren't part of the loan, right?
Right. No, they're not. You're talking the reserve accounts that I mentioned?
Yes, yes.
Yes, not part of the loan, and that's something that they do want to make sure that you are, USDA, the way they look at it, they want you to be fiscally responsible with your utility. And they don't want things to fall apart in, you know, the first five years. They want you to be solvent, you know, going forward.
Can I answer that? Okay, so example, when we did the water improvement, we had to have some kind of reserve. That's why we have two LGIPs that had money quick in there, and then we just kept adding to it to help pay those loans off. We paid that other one off, so now we're just working on the eight hundred thousand, which I believe we have about four hundred and forty-four thousand. So that's, another thing, too, is if we put that two hundred thousand in and we keep going, at least we have it in there as a reserve. But when everything's said and done, we can use it to pay the loan off.
Okay, I, yeah, I get that.
Does that make sense?
Right, but that's, what I'm asking is, what are our rates gonna look like? If we pay the loan off, we still have to have these reserve funds, so what are our rates gonna look like? Say that we paid the loan off immediately with making the money like you're talking about, which I understand. But what are our rates gonna look like moving forward? Because we're still gonna have to have these reserve funds. And are we still gonna have to have them even if we pay the loan off? I mean, you said it's a requirement, DEQ, if you have a loan, like.
Yeah, so I talked a little bit about this with the mayor and some of the city staff here about a month and a half or so ago, or two months ago. So first of all, I don't know how much USDA Rural Development is gonna police your accounts to make sure that you're doing these things. So, you know, these are things that are, that is in your funding agreement with them, that you're saying, yes, we're gonna establish these reserves. We're gonna do this. And, but ultimately, like I heard earlier with the budget discussion with the city council and the mayor of you, you guys can take all this information that you're being told, and you're gonna do what you're gonna do. You know, obviously, your main priority is to make sure that your utility is bringing in enough to pay the bills and including your loan payment every year. You'll get a better sense of what that's gonna look like the first year that you're operating that facility. That's part of the reason that you gotta wait a whole year before you make your payment. You can kind of get a better feel for it. If you have some reserve funds and you don't want to jump your rate up right away and you want to use that as a buffer, that's totally your decision. Or if you want to use it and pull it out and make a chunk payment on your loan to get it down a little quicker, that's totally your decision. So however you want to manage the financial side of that, that's up to the city council. And I'm trying to think if I can speak to your question. As far as what the rates are gonna look like, I'll know better when DEQ tells us what their offer's gonna be.
And you say you'll know that Thursday?
Hopefully, as Alicia said today. They were hoping to make a decision on it this Thursday. And, you know, I don't know if they're gonna let us know on Thursday, if they're gonna let us know Friday or sometime next week. But we'll be sure to follow up and find out what that is, what it looks like. And I'm hoping that they pick the larger grant number that we requested because they kind of had to be looked at multiple funding scenarios for you. And one scenario was, we only do the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan with USDA Rural Development, and the rest of it's all grant money. But that meant DEQ, we need a lot. But that's one of the funding scenarios we've put in front of them, and we put other ones that look at situations where you would have a longer term loan with DEQ alongside your USDA loan if they can't provide enough grant for you to avoid doing that.
So just another quick question. So we should hopefully know before, because we've set to raise X amount every six months moving forward for this, so we should hopefully have a better idea before we have to raise in the next six months?
Correct.
Kind of what we're looking at, so we can adjust accordingly if we need to drop it way back down or whatever, if we're gonna be able to pay the loan off sooner?
Correct, okay. And that first year operation is gonna give you a better idea of how your operation and maintenance is gonna cost for it. We have an estimated number for that. But every community is different on how they pay their operators, what utilities and funds they use to pay their operators. Sometimes it's split between multiple utilities. You've got a water utility and a wastewater utility. How much are you paying your operators for one versus the other? How much power you end up actually using in your treatment plant versus what was estimated and calculated is something that you're gonna get a better feel for after that first year of operation. We know the kind of equipment that's gonna go in, and we know what kind of power it typically uses, and we know how much power costs. So we've done calculations for all of that. But like I said, you're gonna get a better sense of it after that first year. And, you know, you may find out that you either need to push your rate up a little higher to stay on top of your expenses or you may not have to go up that much at all. So I wish I could tell you exactly what that number's gonna be today, but until I find out from DEQ what they're able to do for additional ARPA grant, we're hoping the number is really big. But we also know that they have it. It's just they have to decide if they want to put that much towards this project alone. Working hard.
Thank you.
We're gonna get there.
Yeah.
And I think I've said that all along. It's like, it's not a matter of if you're gonna get enough funding to do this. You have a permit, and everybody knows it. You have to meet that permit, and they're gonna do their best to help you meet that permit. According to your permit, you have to be able to meet some of the new requirements in your permit by the year twenty twenty-nine. So it's gonna be here before we know it. And they want to help you make that happen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
And if you get as much as they're thinking they might be able to do? Not that we're trying to compare to what Kendrick's getting, because it's a wholly different funding scenario.
I understand that. It just, it was, I wish there was a better way for the city, and I don't know that there is, to communicate with the community how this is progressing so it would alleviate, because what looks on paper sometimes isn't it?
Yeah, it's called city council meetings. It can come in meetings.
Anyway, I thought you did really good explaining that, you know, with DQ.
And I don't mind coming to more council meetings if it feels like it's been too long. Have Bonnie or Wendy say, get yourself to our next meeting, which is what they did. Bonnie said, we need you to come to this meeting, so I did. And if it's been too long before you feel like you know what's going on, just know that even if you haven't heard anything, we're all working our tails off.
Things are happening.
Yep, including Seda. Seda's been awesome through this whole project, so.
We stay in communication and we'll be involved in construction and helping out.
Yep, so. It's a labor of love because I really want to see this project come down.
I believe you, I believe you.
Thank you. You bet. And I don't know if there are any other questions about other topics, but I'm here.
Thanks, Neil.
Don't forget your tablet.
Oh, yeah. Didn't bring it this time. Do I need to say anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Drive safe. Good night. I got her number to, she said, because we have to talk about it, so. Thank you.
Thank you for tagging along. Hi, is it, what's your name?
Snodgrass, yes, Seda.
Seda.
We know about her.
Seda, gee, nice to meet you. Love the hair, by the way.
Okay, let's.
Let's just make this like, not long and dragged out, but this is what I have on the agenda. I emailed everyone a sample, a sample of what a ticket for, what a ticket looks like for a city ordinance violation. It's like the code enforcement giving somebody a parking ticket on your windshield of your car, it's that small. It's no secret that Giulietta has a chronic problem with enforcing city ordinances. Whether it's dogs at large, junk in the yard, tall grass, fireworks, yada, yada. We simply don't enforce our codes, and that is apparent on social media, because there's a lot of people poking fun that the city didn't do anything for violating a city ordinance. So we're kind of in a way, kind of a joke, is how we're being perceived by our community. And I think that's disheartening personally. Idaho statute 50-602, that's 50-602, says that in all cities, it is the mayor's responsibility to make sure that all city ordinances are enforced. But unfortunately, that's not happening. So I'm thinking, okay, we're not having a mayor right now enforce city ordinances, so where do we go with that? Well, there's a couple of options, but I wanted to get some help, so I called the city of Lewiston, Troy, and Derry and talked to their city clerks yesterday. And I said, how do you enforce your city codes, you know, city ordinances? And she said, well, we have a city code, excuse me, a code enforcement officer that comes two hours a week, that's it. Two hours a week, they have a code enforcement officer come to their city hall, say, do you have anything for me? Well, like you might have said, yeah, I have two tickets, no, this John Doe had 18 feet tall grass. And you know, John Smith has too many illegally parked cars on the public road. So then he would go and he could be the bad guy. Cause what I'm hearing, nobody here wants to become unpopular or be the bad guy or be targeted to give a city, a Giulietta resident, a ticket for an infraction. So in my mind, I'm like, why have city ordinances at all if you don't enforce them? And it's showing that we don't enforce our ordinances. And it's such an easy fix, so simple. It actually takes courage to do the right thing, and I don't want to be the only one to have that courage to do the right thing. And I think one step is purchasing a ticket book. That's a step in the right direction, so how does that work? It's four easy steps, a resident calls in city hall, they have a complaint about a dog at large, simply an example. Wendy would send out a letter, they've got 30 days to comply and remedy the situation. They've got 30 days to fix what's going on, it doesn't get fixed, okay, then now you're gonna get a citation. Because it's a $300 fine to have your dog broken friendly around the city. And that would be step two, excuse me, the complaint comes in, a letter goes.